All right, folks. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening. Looks like y'all can hear me, but if someone could give me a thumbs up in the chat that you can actually hear me, I would appreciate that quite a bit. Let's see, welcome Emily, Sandy, Sarah, other Sarah, Ansa. Who else did I see in here? Awesome, a bunch of folks. We are here to talk about the ACA 920. I got the number and the name right finally. This will be our last study session for Confluence Essentials. After this, we'll have covered everything for that exam. But if you aren't taking the exam, this is still a good thing to learn about if you use Confluence. Thank you, Emily, for letting me know. And good luck, Sarah, fixing whatever's going on in Google. We're going to cover what they call advanced topics. Thank you, Scott, for letting me know. And Sandy. What the exam calls advanced topics, this is a very small part of the exam. I think it's 8%. But it's just some other ways to use Confluence. And thinking back to when we started this, this training is for folks who just use it on a day-to-day basis. So again, we're not going to dig into like all the admin stuff. But we will talk about some additional features that the average person will find very, very useful. I will also spend some of the time today talking about how to sign up for the exam and what the exam is like. For folks who haven't taken one of these certification exams before, because it can be a different experience. But would be curious if folks have taken one of these exams, sharing what they thought about it as we keep going. As usual, we're going to start with some beautiful slides that I hopefully got right this time. Just to kind of level set on the topics and ideas, and then we will jump into Confluence Cloud Premium. Everything I show you should work in both, in any flavor of Confluence today. There might be some limitations, things like whiteboards, for example, you only get three if you're on free. Hey, that rhymes, three on free. But otherwise, everything I show you should work on any flavor of cloud. So here we go. Always curious, you know, where folks are in the world. I'm out in the Bay Area, California. I've had my career in tech on the West Coast. Started out as the IT help desk person who brought your computer. And quickly got into project work, and since then I've worked on systems, I've consulted, I've written, you know, bits of code and scripts and things. Every step of the way, though, there has been some kind of knowledge or some kind of collaboration I've had to do. And I quickly noticed that we need a good system to do that. I ended up being forced into Atlassian products because that's what my company happened to use. And I had zero training, as many of you may have heard. So to help with that throughout my career, I've done things like take exams and earn certifications. Katharina, welcome from Argentina. We've got Dayton, Ohio, from Sarah Des Moines. Is it Des Moines or Des Moines, Scott? I took a lot of certification exam to round out my experience because I was forced to learn by doing. And I found that the certification exams helped level out what I know. Of course, you can't just have the certification, you also have to use the system to know how it works. But taking the certification has filled in my knowledge. And I don't have a lot of spare time, which is why we're here. I get to study with all of you for these things. Now, this is a one-way, manana, na, na, welcome back. This YouTube is great because you all can see and hear me. I can't see and hear you, though. And I'll talk about potential opportunities to meet live towards the end of this. But please use the chat. Many of you have already found it. It's over to the right. Put questions in there, share your experience, interact with other folks. As you're comfortable, I will use it to ask some questions. Again, where are you in the world, your comfort level with things? But please don't hesitate to pop in there if you have something you want to share, if you can help someone else, or if you need to challenge something I said. I also get to learn in these, and there's a lot of great smart people out there, so please, I'll say, speak up, chat up if you have something. Susan, good to see you. Daryl, how's it going in Albany? Also, if you could like and subscribe, that helps the channel out, that helps me a bit. But let me know what other topics you want. I'll talk about the next series of certifications I'll be doing later. But if you have a specific thing you want to learn, please let me know. I'm looking for more ideas. I'm trying to do multiple live streams a week, but also recorded video. And what you want to learn is very helpful. I can guess about what you would like. But if there's something specific you want to know, let me know. A quick agenda, so we'll talk about some concepts like tasks and attachments, and then also different content types we see in Confluence, things like calendars and whiteboards and databases. Reminder to record. Uh-oh. What am I recording? Am I not recording? Now you got me worried, Sarah. We'll then talk about this stuff hands-on in Confluence Cloud Premium, but also talk again a bit about the exam. How do we sign up? How much does it cost? How do we take it? Because if some folks want to do that, that will be useful information, just so you aren't surprised when you go to try and figure that out. So our first question, do you use Confluence for task tracking? This is something I didn't know it could do for a while. And then I found out and I kind of mentally kicked myself because I was using other things. And if you do use it for task tracking, what's the most confusing or frustrating or annoying bit about it to you? Oh, Sarah, thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, YouTube does take care of the recording for this particular thing for me, thankfully. When I do other YouTube videos, though, I have, to your point, done a great talk about something for about 10 minutes and forgot to turn on my recording device. So I had to do it all again. So it was a good practice. That's all right, Sarah. Mine is only just waking up. I've got my beautiful Confluence mug with coffee in it, so. I was hoping someone would say that. Sandy uses Jira for tasks. Jira is another product by Atlassian. Groups that tend to use Confluence also tend to have Jira. And most groups that I'm aware of end up using Confluence because they use Jira. So they connect and they integrate very well. No, 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 no need to apologize, Sarah. Thank you for reminding me. It's a good thing. I have a checklist of things I look at every time I turn on my computer. I don't know how long people have been around to see me livestream, but basically everything that could have gone wrong has. The camera has failed, my lights have died, my computer crashed, I've lost the internet, I've forgotten to record, my mic didn't work. So you name it, it's probably happened. So I have a big, long list of things I double check. Sandy, this Confluence mug came from the Confluence Premium Week. Last year, so I got it as a thank you for doing a livestream for them. Ansa uses a dashboard to create follow-ups, but not in Confluence. Welcome, Rebecca. Good to see you. So you can use Confluence to track tasks. Yes, Kari, when I was about 12, my dad's friend put a fish hook through my finger accidentally. And to help him calm down, after I got back from the hospital, I was told to look at him and say, Victor, blank happens. Dad didn't fill in the entire thing for me, but that's it. Katharina, we'll talk about this a little bit. I will dig up a video I have that digs more in-depth into tasks. But I, my email will be at the end of this, Katharina, please feel free to email me if you're looking for more information about task tracking in Confluence. Most people will use Jira for tracking tasks, and Jira can be a bit, excuse me, a bit much sometimes. So directly in Confluence, we can add tasks. They look like these little checkboxes. And I'll make some live examples. But they are assignable. You can assign them to someone, so you can say, Rob has to do something, or Andrew has to do something. And then you can put a date on them. So say, hey, they're due by a certain date or a certain point in time. I use them very frequently when I'm in a meeting, like I'm in the middle of something and I want to just record a thought or an idea, and I don't have time to pop over into Jira. Christine likes databases. You're reading my mind. We'll get to those just in a minute. Emily, need to find a way to manage tasks but haven't found a way that works for you. This is my problem. My problem is I don't have a system. I don't have a process. I'm starting to use Confluence for this because I spend so much time in Confluence. I'm using it when I'm writing meeting notes, I'm writing requirement documents, whatever. I can insert a task directly on the page I'm on. And then Confluence records that. And there's three ways to add them. There's this little task checkbox. You can just type forward slash action item, I think is their technical name. Or you can do an open bracket, close bracket, right next to each other, and that will insert the task. So there's three ways to get them in there. I like the open bracket, close bracket because usually I'm typing meeting notes, I'm trying to figure stuff out. And it's much quicker for me to do that than to try and go click a button or to try even to do a macro. And you can put these anywhere on a page. They don't have to be in a specific, like a special section of the page. And I think I finally found this video I'm looking for. All right. The link I just put, Katharina, goes to a longer video that explains tasks. I won't get full the end of them here, but that will give you some ideas, hopefully. So these are the ways to add them, the brackets. So when we look at the macro menu, you'll see some of them have this little gray box with something in it, and I'll show you this live. That's the hot key for that macro, kind of like how a double forward slash puts in a date. Now, my problem with tasks is just like my problem with drafts. I will add them in and forget they exist. Confluence automatically tracks all of your tasks on your homepage under the Tasks menu. Sandy likes the Kanban boards. I like those too, and I'll talk, maybe talk about those more at the end. My challenge within Sandy is it requires me to go into Jira. And if I'm in the middle of a meeting or a call and I'm furiously taking notes, I don't want to have to stop, open up Jira, add the task or move it, and go back into Confluence. So what I do is I'll build my tasks in Confluence, and they can be very lightweight stuff. No worries, Sandy. I knew exactly what you meant. I do that all the time. I will put my tasks in Confluence, and then I'll review them at the end of the day, end of the week. And there might be little simple things, you know, add a calendar invite for next Tuesday. And I can just check it off right in Confluence, and it's done. If it's a bigger thing, I'm building out a project plan, I will then take those tasks. And there is actually an automation you can build to make Jira tickets from them, but then I'll determine, do I actually need a Jira ticket? It gives me another way just to track things and to think through what I need to do, but lets me in the moment record everything. And that's what I tend to lose. I tend to forget to write the thing down. So I do it on the page with the task. Christine really likes databases. I'm chuckling Christine because I use them quite a bit. They do show up on this certification exam, but we don't get as in-depth as maybe I would like, but they are a great tool. There is another way to get your tasks, though. There is an entire macro, excuse me, that will allow you to pull in every task. And you can pull in tasks based on the assignee, based on if they're done or not, and a whole bunch of other things. Database video. I dropped another link. This is a video I did on just the basics of databases. And I put that in there just because they were brand new, and that's a bit older, but it gives you a good overview of databases if you're looking for more information, more stuff on it. And I've also got one more, which is an FAQ on database. But be on the lookout for more information on things like tasks and databases as I have time to build them. I use the Task Report macro for my teams. I'll build out a page that has a section for Rob's tasks. And then the macro just automates pulling in new tasks for Rob. Most of the time, though, I'm going to go in and make that Jira ticket, so I take a little bit extra cost, I'll say, a little bit more time to build the task. Again, because it's in the moment, I'm in the meeting, I'm talking to the person, I don't want to step out of that. The other thing we'll talk about are attachments. I don't personally use this all this much. I'll put attachments on a page. You can have files or images or videos. But there's an entire macro that helps track attachments. Typically, I'm just adding images. I don't load a lot of files into Confluence. I tend to just link them because we happen to use Google Suite, so I'll link to a Google Sheet or link to a Google Document instead of uploading a Word doc or uploading an Excel workbook, that kind of thing. Now, the Attachments macro is a way to see all them on the page. Lauren, how do I add the due date? I will show you this live, but as you're typing in a task, in the line, in the same line as a task, you type out, Rob has to buy the thing, @mentionrob, and then do a double forward slash to insert a date, and then change the date to whatever. That will put the date on there and make it a due date. I'll show you that live, though, when we get into Premium. Again, I don't use Confluence to store a lot of attachments, so this macro for me isn't the most useful thing in the world. However, if there's a lot of attachments on a page, this can help you find them. Oh. That was my alarm. I'm supposed to wake up now. I don't know why I had that set. Other things I need to go fix that I don't make time to. So there is this Attachments macro that helps us find attachments that might be living on the page. All right, as I mentioned, there's not too much on the quote "advanced" unquote. So what is your favorite type of content in Confluence? Katharina, is there a place to edit macros? Long answer, yes. Short answer, not easily. You can develop and make your own macros. So you can use Atlassian Forge, I believe it's called, and this is something I'm only aware of. I haven't done myself. But it is possible for individuals or groups to go in and create a new macro for Confluence if you needed to do something. I personally haven't worked at any groups that have gone that route. They tend to go use an add-on from the App Store that gives them extra flexibility. But if you have an idea for a custom macro that would help just your group or others, you can go in and create them. Kythra, yes, Y E S. Yellow Experiment Standards? Anyone else help me out here with yes? What is that an acronym for, team? Yearly Equipment Savings. The kind of content that is up to date. I love these indirect answers. Training and Info Management. Awesome. Ansa is yelling at me databases, but at least there's a smiley face, so I feel good about that. Embedding Live Documents Without an Add-on. Kythra, content that exists. Christine, embedding Live Documents. What do you mean by a Live Document, Christine? Just curious if you could help the group understand that idea. So again, for the purposes of the ACA 920, we're looking at mainly pages. That is the main building block, and that is what most people, most of the time, need to know how to use and manage and edit. There are other types of content we can add, though, and I'll quickly go over these here, but then also live. One thing we have are whiteboards. These are relatively new. It's the equivalent of something like Visio. So if you've used Microsoft Visio, this would be a similar thing. It's a little bit younger, so it doesn't have nearly as many features as you might be looking for. They are constantly building it out, though. The big advantage for me is the whiteboard exists in Confluence. If my team, you know, my team has a Confluence license, that means they can use the whiteboard. I run into problems all the time with something like LucidChart or Miro or Visio where I'm the only one with the license, and then I have to be the one to edit everything. I'll do it. It just drives me nuts. There's a Microsoft Whiteboard? It also integrates very well with Confluence and Jira. There shouldn't be a shock. So it makes it easier to do things like planning for sprints, especially if you're doing Agile. You can do sprint planning in there and just click and drag tickets around to reassign them. So I found it very useful for visual thought process. I do a lot of system mapping in there. How do all these systems interrelate and where do things go? Ooh, what is Mrs. Whiteboard, Emily? I'm curious about that one. Or Ms., I'm sorry. Sorry, that was a joke for folks. I know that means Microsoft Whiteboard. On the other side, we've got databases. These are also relatively new. They allow structured data within Confluence. So it's in between a table and a full-blown Jira project in my mind. It allows you to have rows of things and then columns about that thing. I am quite smart. Thank you, Emily. I'm not going to pull that comment up, but I appreciate it. I use these a lot for lightweight project planning. Again, if I'm using Jira and I have a big software project, I'll go use Jira. But if I have a smaller project, I might use a database instead because I can't have things like a status and a signee, a due date in there. Because that makes it just quicker and easier. Again, it's also in Confluence. You're giving me an idea here, Emily, for a short, and I got to write this down. Here it is. Oh, live, excuse me, Christine coming back about Live Documents. You can share a document as an embedded link. When you use that link in a page, you can have a view. And I'm chopping off your comment of the document. Oh, I will show you something similar in Confluence. It might be what you're thinking about. So I use databases for project planning. I also use them for planning restructures of Confluence. So when I go rebuild a Confluence space, I'll use a database to track it all. How do I use the data in a database? I typically just keep it within the database, Susan. I can show some examples, and I thought I had another video where I walked through how I use it for project planning. But I can show a quick example here. I won't get too deep into it in this particular training. But I, somewhere do have an upcoming session on databases just to dig into them. Or again, they're relatively new, and a lot of folks are still learning about them. So those are the two other content types we'll see. There are also calendars in Confluence. I will be honest, I don't use these at all. I haven't met a group that uses them because we tend to have something like a Google Calendar, like an MS Microsoft 365. But it is a place to go and put events or dates or activities within Confluence. So if your team is truly using Confluence as a one-stop shop for all the knowledge, you could use this calendar to map things out and where things go. But again, I don't personally use them all that much. You can have them by project, so different projects could have it. I don't know how, I'm curious if anyone in the chat has used them, actually. Confluence Calendars. I'm chuckling to myself, Sandy. The general idea of a calendar or specifically Confluence calendars? I'd be curious, Sandy, how, you know, if you are on a marketing team, how you've seen it used. And I'm only asking because I haven't used them. So that's an area where I'm blind to what's going on. The other topic that will pop up is something called an automation. This is, we can have the system do things for us. At its simplest, it has to have a trigger, what tells it to run, and then action. In this example, if a page is published, add a certain label. You could also have it do things like automatically archive old content. It can automatically move pages, manage restrictions, do a whole bunch of other things. For the purpose of the exam, we just have to know that they exist, that they must have a trigger and then action, and that they can optionally have a condition, something that lets us filter when it runs, and a branch. So imagine I ran an automation every morning. My trigger was, it's 7:00 AM, run. Grab every page that's inactive and take some action. So it's a, it's a way to get rid of the drudgery, I call it. So if you're talking to your team and like, why do we always have to do blank? Ask them more questions to understand what they're suffering with, and they can change it up. Rebecca, you can connect them to Google Calendars. I love what I'm learning here. Do you find, Rebecca, that the team uses it in Confluence? And I'm asking because I'm so used to just opening Google Calendar, like that's just my habit. But if I can have a different habit, you know, this helps me change. Thank you for letting me know you can actually link them. Puts deadlines in. Okay. I'm glad people actually use the feature. I know the nice people at Atlassian put a lot of stuff in systems, and sometimes I scratch my head and wonder what it's for. Gotcha. Colleagues in marketing use it to remember things. Huh. Well, I will need to tinker around with this more. Okay, teleport into Confluence. What other questions y'all have on that advanced stuff, tasks, attachments, content? I will show it to you live before we jump into talking about the exam, but please keep the questions coming. Emily, I think you probably could Google "hata." Sorry. Not sorry. All right, here we are in Confluence Cloud Premium. Again, I will do my best to call out things that are different. The biggest difference, off the top of my head, whiteboards, you'll be limited to only three per person if you're in Free. So that's going to be the biggest restriction. But I'm just going to pop into a space. Okay, having a hard time. Emily, I can also take a look and see if we can integrate with Microsoft. Oh, Kari, I didn't. Sorry, Kari. I didn't even see the "not." I just, I read "now" and I saw that. MS Calc Integration. Kari, you can delete chat, so you can just wipe out the entire message. But you're right, I don't think there's a way to edit messages that you've typed. This is Confluence, and I thought I had somewhere, hello, task, nope, a setup example of this. If I can't find it in about, there it is. I've set up this page to track all of my tasks. And all we're seeing is a page with a macro or a series of macros on it. Oh, wonderful, my Zoom got stuck. We're just seeing a page of, there we go. Macros. So if I go in and edit this, I've put in different sections, and I did this just to break it up. But tasks assigned to me, this has the Task Report macro. And I'll see one more time if I can zoom without breaking reality. I cannot. Okay. But each of these shows me a different slice of tasks that exist. So if I come in and edit this, I have options. It defaults to the current space. So it's in the Project JQL space, but I told it only pull in tasks on pages with specific labels. So one way to use this would be if every, an easy way is if each project has its own space, you could have one page that shows tasks by one project just down the line. And then each space has a page that shows only tasks within that space. Another way you might think of it is if you have multiple spaces and pages for your developers or for your marketers or for certain people, you can then pull in just tasks on those labeled pages. So show me all the infrastructure, tasks that come in here. You can also do it by a signee, which is pretty good. I use this one a lot, and that's what I've done for this one, I think. I said, hey, only show me tasks assigned to Rob. I can only show tasks created by a certain person, so we have all these different options, I'll get my head out of the way, for managing these after it's created, if they're incomplete or not. But again, just a way to lightweight record and track completed tasks or open tasks or other things. To add a task, I'm just going to go to one of these pages. Let me update this. And it, this is the task here on the left. The due date is what it's pulled out of the task. The person and then where it shows up, so you can go right back to wherever it happens to exist. Which is a nice way to get that traceability to what's going on, where does this come from, like, why do we have it? And then to add tasks, you'll see down at the bottom, like I use a template that has an area for this. And to add a new one, if I have a list, I can just type in my task, do the thing. And when I hit Enter, it's just going to add a new task. So I typically have a section of my page that includes action items, and I then just run it, run it down, and I keep going as people are talking. And that's a very quick and easy way for me to just keep going and not get pulled out of my flow. Now, you don't have to put them in a special section called Action Items. You can put these anywhere on the page. So I could come up here under the Goals section, and I could click my little action items, and that'll insert one. I can do a forward slash in the word action for action item. Or I can just type an open bracket, close bracket in a space, and that'll insert another one as well. One annoying thing about this is if you have edit access to the page, you can tick the boxes. I have seen groups have a page of a list of tasks, and random people would come in and think, oh, I'm going to go check these things off. This resulted in, this is like a page update. So this can be very annoying and challenging if it's exposed to a lot of people. But it is a quick way to just add in these things. And I didn't show the date. What am I going to do? Double-check lighting? I don't know. Double-check lighting. And then I can just @mention myself. And a double forward slash lets me insert a date. So I might say it's due by here. And that's the task. Now it's in there. Some folks mentioned Jira. I can select the text. And if I'm integrated to a Jira instance, I can just click and make this a Jira task. So I can go in and create it in any site that I have access to in any project. I can convert it there. I have also seen an automation that can grab tasks and flip them into Jira tickets. So there are some ways to smooth out and make it easier to turn these things into a full-blown Jira ticket instead of just hanging out as a task in Confluence. Chad, there's a connector in Power Automate. That sounds impressive. That can help connect, I assume you mean Microsoft Calendar to Confluence Calendar. So questions on the tasks. Again, quick and easy to add. If you're already using Jira, though, you know, maybe don't break your habit. Just know that this is something else that can be helpful and can be useful. Just looking at Power Automate here. Just looking at Power Automate here. Oh, it's on the Microsoft side. Okay. Automate and Confluence. Full disclosure on that link, it's just the first thing that popped up on Google that looked appropriate. But that chat, I think ties into what you're saying. Susan, can we make Jira Service Management JSM tickets this way? So if I select this text and I click Create Jira Issue, I can pick any project I have access to. So these first two I happen to know are JSM projects. So I can drop this in here, you know, fill out all the fields and then go make a ticket over in the JQL JSM project. Or I could put it in any other, any other project I have access to in that instance. And here are the request types. There we go. I, I'll have to go tinker with that, Sarah. Calendar to Jira. Attachments. Sorry, I'm making that noise because again, I don't use them all that much. I tend to just copy and paste images in when I'm building something, usually in the form of like a how to guide or a how to article. That just happens to be my use case. You can though, click and insert files or paste links in. I don't upload links, I just paste in the link. But you can come up here and click on the little add image file video and insert them that way. Now, once they're on the page, there's this attachments macro that will find all the attachments that exist. Again, I don't personally have a good use case for this. I just know that it exists and if I need to use it, it's a tool in the toolkit. But curious if anyone has used this for anything other than just figuring out what it does. I love how we got the whole group trying to solve this MS calendar thing. With an iCal URL. When we create tickets from the page, what determines the options? All right. Let me pull back here, Scott. So I'm just selecting text, I clicked Jira Issue. Everything I see here is just pulled off the ticket. So if I select the account help request type, you'll notice the fields at the bottom refreshed and changed. I don't know how much control we have over what is displayed. But you will notice on this particular issue type in Jira, I have these tabs. These tabs show up. So it's showing me the, what I call the agent view, the issue view here. So this isn't what the customer would see, this is what the agent would see. And I have to have access to the project and all those fields to do it. Emily, let us know if you figure out Power Automate and what comes of it. If you're anything like me, that's a, I like to just spend extra time digging into those things. Hopefully we have a good answer for you. Hopefully that got to your question, Scott, but it's driven by whatever's on the underlying Jira ticket. So I can't from here add or remove fields, I'm just stuck with whatever exists on the Jira side. That was attachments. Next up, we've got whiteboards. I'll just show you an example of a whiteboard. Again, this is limited to three per account or three per person in free Confluence. If you go over three, it'll ask you to disable or turn one off. They do, actually, I'll make a brand new one. They do come with templates. These templates, I actually think are pretty useful. I don't use them, but if you click on one of them, it will insert the template, but then also some tips and tricks on how to use it, which can be very useful. So I always recommend folks take a look at the templates. Where are they hiding? Come back here. They exist at the bottom right here. I usually tick them off. I turn off this pop up just because I don't want to stare at this the whole, ooh, I saw coffee. Stare at them the whole time? Lean coffee. But just like we should explore the page templates, we should double check the whiteboard templates just to see what's going on, because you might get some good ideas, like whatever a lean coffee startup is or stand up. Other things about the exam about whiteboards? I can't think of anything specific, just know that they exist and it's a way to visually collaborate. They do integrate with Jira. So there's a Jira icon down here and I can pull in tickets from Jira and they'll be displayed visually. Once they're displayed, I can then do things like change the status. And if I use what they call a smart section, I can do things like update the priority or the assignee that way. From Confluence, Scott, probably not the best way. You can work, if you aren't a Jira admin, you can work with your Jira admin to update the create screen on company managed projects and force only certain fields to show up when they hit create. And you can also use validators to ensure that they are, what's the word I'm looking for? Filled in properly. If you are using service management, JSM, you can restrict what fields show up on the request type. And I know this because I'm studying for the 420 Jira Service Projects. I'll drop a link to that the next session there, Scott, but if you aren't in that Monday session with me, that might be helpful to you. And if you already know what I'm talking about, you're ahead of me. Where did it go? Actually, we started with it here. So that's a whiteboard. I use them quite a bit to think through things, but also to build structures. So like, I will visually plan out how I want to change a Confluence space. The session. Oh, screen setup. Groups also use them for things like retrospectives. I've seen people just use them as like a scratch pad, like a doodle pad, where they can go and do whatever. But again, they're in Confluence and for me, that's a huge update. Awesome. Scott, I'm pretty sure I saw you in there. That link is the one where we talked about screens. You're looking to modify the create screen if you're in a company managed project. The other one are databases. So again, it's just, it's, in my mind, it's in between a table and a Jira project. We have, each row is an item to think about or something we want to discuss or track or do. And then each column is a piece of data about it. In this particular one, I'm pulling in Confluence pages and then information about the page, like the title, the space it's in, the owner, when it was last updated. And then if I want to make changes to it. And then we can add things like tags. Now, there's a whole lack of different, oh, they updated the name. The joy of cloud software is it changes in your real time. We can add different columns if we want additional information, so in assignee, for example. And then we can pull in some other information from Jira or from Confluence. I'll quickly just make a blank one, just so we can see what they look like. It comes with, they call them templates. It's more like a pre-filled out database to see what it can look like. But these are interesting just because they tell me a bit about how Elasian thinks about potential use cases. So someone mentioned you can have like a Kanban board. You can visualize the entries differently. So we could do a board. And again, this is where it almost blurs the line between Confluence and Jira. So unless I have a really good use case to shove my team out of Confluence into Jira, I could give them a quote board that looks and feels almost identical to a Jira board right here. Now, all this is doing, it doesn't really have a status, it's just changing. Where was it? Are they hiding fields on me? It's just changing one of these asset types or one of these fields. Which one is it changing? Oh, there we go. It's just changing the asset type. But this could be a status. This is in progress, this is being ideated, I'm trying to figure out what it's doing. So just another way to, you know, help people out. Not everyone needs a full blown Jira project to track stuff. And it's very easy to get stuck in, when you have a hammer, everything is a nail and you always use Jira to track it. This gives you another option. Again, the advantage here is this is inside Confluence. My team doesn't have to open Jira, they don't have to know anything about Jira. They're happy in Confluence, keep them in Confluence. You know, if it's silly and it works, it's not silly. So I'll, I'll give this to folks and if it works for them, I'll walk away and they'll be happy. I feel like there were other things though on pages I needed to babble about. Oh, calendars, duh. They live up here in the top, they can be disabled. The screen I'm showing you now is for space admins, we don't have to worry about that for the exam. However, if you don't see the calendar up here, it's because your space admin has just turned it off. And it's as easy as just checking a switch. So if you don't see it, you can go get it restored. Again, I tended to turn it off because I don't use it. Maybe I should. But here's the calendar, it's a calendar and then I can click in to just add something. Birthdays, a Jira release. Ooh, and we can pull in the sprints. Okay. If this tells you anything about how much I don't look at this particular thing? Maybe I should actually play with these. All right, so we can add events in here. Related content to it. Oh, I like that. I thought I was making it. No? Create tasks, invalid Confluence item. Well, that doesn't help me. Huh, well, that might not be working right now. But I now have the item showing up visually on the calendar. Again, I haven't used these too much, so for the exam, be aware that they exist. My homework is to go figure out how they work and put together some learning about it. So I am not ignorant anymore. Yeah, we can't, oh, here we go. Export to iCalendar or subscribe. And here we've got Outlook. So Emily, it's listed as being able to connect. Oh, Thunderbird, haven't thought about that in years. And then here's that iCal option that I think Susan or someone else mentioned. Kari, keep me honest. But this would then pull in. Oh no, is this export? Yeah, this is exporting the Confluence calendar into a different system. So this isn't pulling in, this is pushing out. Ooh, and now, okay, I won't go too deep down this rabbit hole, but I just saw restrictions on a calendar. Add, edit or remove restrictions, interesting. So you can, you can add, just like a page, you can hide the calendar. Add events, hide events. Delete, subscribe. Okay. This is, this is the perfect example of why I go after certifications, because it exposes me to things that I don't use on a day to day basis. And if, I might not ever use this, however, this now gives me another tool that I can pull out when I work with folks that can help solve a problem. I joke, it's like, you might have a toolkit at home and you don't really know what that one wrench does. But it could be very useful if you know what it's for. And that's where studying for these things exposes you to those ideas. And that's why I appreciate the chat helping everyone figure this stuff out. Indian Suga, what teams use Confluence the most? That is a great question, my friend. Again, the environments I work in, we have Confluence and that's our knowledge base, mostly because we use Jira for the software development side. So really, everyone is using Confluence. However, many teams also use Google Drive or Microsoft to store things. I typically see Confluence used as a source of truth for internal teams like finance or HR, because it's one place that those teams agree, all of our stuff goes there. A lot of it though depends on the corporate environment, like what's the culture of your team? And while I'm talking, I'll just come back to full screen real quick. What you want to try and avoid is having multiple different systems where all your information lives. So if your team's going to use Confluence, make sure you're all using it. It's not intended for any one particular team though. Confluence can be used by any team. It's just about them deciding, hey, we want to use it. In my experience though, it tends to be the internal teams, like HR uses it for policies. Project management teams use it for their documentation and engineering teams will use it for sharing their stuff as well. But there's no real limitation to it. You'll see different use cases and you'll see different people using it differently. But that doesn't mean their way is good, right, wrong, or the other. Keep dropping your questions. I do want to talk about the exam itself though. I'll show you where you can sign up for it. Exam. No? Training? Sorry, I'm trying to find the right page and I can't. I show up higher on the Google search results in Elasian, which scares me. So you have two options to sit the exam. So if you're deciding to take it, awesome. If you're deciding not to take it, equally awesome. You know, I recommend folks, if they're interested, especially if your company has a stipend or an allowance for certification, take advantage of that. And just add something that you can point to and say, hey, I know about Confluence. Personally, I like to earn them, it drives my partner crazy. I joke that I'll print them out and put them up on the wall, I don't actually do that. But if you decide to take it, you have to sign up through Elasian. Now, I'll show that screen in a minute. But you have two, a choice to make. You can take it in a testing center. So these are, there are companies that have these testing centers where you would go in and you would sit down in a room and you'd have like a little cubicle thing to sit in with a computer. You can't have your phone, you know, there's rules about it, but there's a proctor there. There's someone there to make sure you're not cheating. That has the advantage of the environment is set up. All you do is show up on the day, after, you know, you've paid online, you're good to go. You can also take them at home, they call it self-proctoring. I tend to self-proctor. I tell myself it's easier and quicker. I don't know if that's true and I might change my mind for the next exam I take. But when you self-proctor, you have to be in a room with basically nothing else in it. There can't be any papers on the desk. No one else can come into the room, you can't get up and leave. So a big difference is if you go to the exam center, you can go use the bathroom. If you're doing it at home though, you, you can't get up and leave, you're stuck until you're done. The annoyance there is you'll put special software on your computer and then you'll use your camera and kind of show a virtual proctor what's on your desk, what's under your desk, what's behind you, what's on the couch over there, what's over your head? And after that person is satisfied that you don't have, you know, your notes right next to you, you can start your exam. I did that a lot through COVID, just because I couldn't go to a testing center. Given the state of my office right now, it would be a big pain for me to clean all this stuff up, honestly. So those are your options. You can take the exam in a testing center, which is a controlled environment or at home, but you have to clean it all up and no one can come interrupt you, which is annoying. Scott, where are certification centers? Great question. Let me flip back over. Can editors back up their own pages? No. Sorry, I got distracted here, Scott. We can't, like, you can download a PDF of your page, but that's not really your question, Susan. The advantage of, at least I don't think it is. The advantage of Confluence Cloud is they handle all that for you. You get the version history, but if that page is ever deleted and purged, it's gone forever. Like permanently gone. That said, it's pretty hard, like it's a multi-step process to purge a page. So as long as it isn't getting purged, it'll always exist. And that's why I tend to archive things instead of delete them. I am on the, here it is. Elasian's official page for the certification. Wow, Elasian, Elasian's. And kind of in the middle there's Schedule Your Exam. Now, the testing centers at every, every country has a different company, I believe, that runs them. Certmetric is one I've heard of. I forget the names of these companies. But this is the portal for signing up for exams. And this is where you can go to go find which exams you've done in the past. So like, I can go to my credentials and status and this will show me, my only active Elasian certification is this one. Confluence Essentials. Wow, that was really a year ago. Oh, time flies. So this is where you can go to keep track of things. I also think I have in here, no, it's not listed, I had failed an earlier one. But from here, I can click on Schedule An Exam. And PSI is this particular company. There are some things to consider. If you have to reschedule, you have to do Um, there are some things to consider. If you have to reschedule, you have to do so within a certain period of time. Oh, interesting. Um, Chad, I haven't been to a testing center in a while. The last one I went to, it was in like, um, just an office building that had different offices. It was on the ground floor and they took up half the ground floor. Oh, sorry about that, Emily. I'll see if I can do it live and hopefully it's not just you and it's everyone. Uh, if you cancel or reschedule within two days, 48 hours, you might lose your entire exam fee. So this exam is a hundred bucks. Again, if your company can pay that, that's awesome. That's typically what I try and do. Um, but if you need to reregister, you have to wait seven days. So if you don't cancel in advance, or if you don't pass, you gotta wait a week. Um, okay, I was able to get this far. So this is then detailing all of the information that this company PSI has about the exam. Um, special accommodations, if you need them, you can go submit a ticket. You need at least two weeks notice. So if you need any kind of accommodation, let them know in advance. I, I have to believe this is not intentional, Emily. It bothers me though that someone would feel that because it is frustrating. I don't fall, I don't happen to fall into that bucket, but I can easily see how this is a bit of a pain in the butt. Um. Uh, Chad, multiple companies will use the same center. So these aren't run by Atlassian. This is a, a separate company that helps groups schedule their exams. I've done them for Microsoft, for CompTia, for PMI, and it might all be in the same building. Um, retakes, you have to wait seven days if you don't pass, so you can't take it multiple times in a week or in a row. Um, late no-shows, et cetera. Now, what you're allowed to have, um, you'll notice there's a difference. You can have an English dictionary if you need it. But you cannot have a pen or paper if you're at home. So this is another example of the test center being a little bit different. When I go to the test center and I'm given a pen and paper, I sit down and write down the top five things I'm most concerned about forgetting. Um, just so I have it written down. I can't do that at home though. So that's another annoyance. Um, Kaither, I think I shared my horror story of, uh, the PSI home software crashing. And that's another challenge. There might be a technical issue with the software if you're at home. So just a consideration. Um, the annoyance of the testing center is you have to physically go to the testing center. Um, which up until now I haven't. As I'm talking about this, I'll probably do that for the next one. Uh, but up until now, I've been comfortable trying this at home. Uh, but that's just something, uh, to consider. Um, I can click on available tests and just see what's available. This is a list of everything I can take. I don't believe, um, Confluence has any tiered certifications, so it's not like I have to take 900 before 905. Um, so this is just a list of every certification Atlassian currently offers. Uh, and again, for this one, we're looking for the 920. Um, quick plug, I'm doing the 900 next in the series of study sessions. I'll talk about that at the end. But I pop in here every once in a while just to see, like, what do they have? Oh, there's now a Loom certification, so I'll be on the lookout for some training on that one. Uh, I'll just click on the exam. And again, just some information about it. Things like we can't copy or communicate, you know, content. No electronic devices, so leave your phone either in another room or you can leave it up at the front and lock it in, you know, lock it in a box, basically. Uh, if you go to a testing center, show up half an hour, 45 minutes early, yeah, we really don't want to be late. Oh, sorry, Scott. Um. I got to that from this link. Kind of in the middle, you'll see schedule your exam. This then opens up Certmetrics. Now you, you'll probably have to log in. I'm already logged into, um, my Atlassian account from here. And then up on the left, there's schedule your exam. And I clicked on the PSI SSO. Yeah. Thank, thank you for calling that out. This part, like navigating this process can be annoying. Um. Now that I'm thinking about it, maybe I'll just do a video on that too, because it's so annoying. Um, so just a whole bunch of information about it. Um, hmm, but I can go to schedule and try new booking. I'll go find my exam, the 920. Huh, um, I guess try all the standard troubleshooting stuff, Emily. Uh, hard refresh, clear the cache, try an incognito window, a different browser, question mark. Um, where is my take the exam button? Am I blind? Oh, let me get rid of that. Go away. Nope, still not there. Schedule. New booking. 920. Test instructions. Oh, I've completed it, so it's yelling at me. Okay. I'm just going to pick another one so I can demonstrate, looking into how do we schedule this thing? Okay, you're all set to book your test. There we go. So on the right side, it's showing me the fees. I'll just click on continue booking. And this is where I'll select, do I want to do it online proctored or in a test center? Um. Up to you if you want to pay an extra $30 to schedule, you know, to get the protection of canceling. I'll continue. All of my wonderful information. I'm going to skip the verification just for now. Uh, but scheduling is where we'll see where the available, uh, test centers are. So I'll just type in my zip code. Or not. San Francisco? There we go. And then Scott, I think you had this question, where are the testing centers? It's going to show me the closest testing centers to the location I typed in. So there's some in San Francisco, there's one in Union City, one out in Walnut Creek. Um, and it's telling me, you know, when are the slots available? I could take this on April, April 12th if I wanted. So this is how we would find the physical testing centers, just typing in different addresses. Um, Stanford CT. I'm just picking random places. I'll click find. And then I get a list of the other ones within a hundred miles. This is probably too big of a radius. I should probably shrink it. Uh, but that's how we'll find it. And then from here I would just then pay the fee and then sit the exam. Um, that went a lot faster than I thought it would go. Alright, so that's all the content for the 920. Um, and I've got my usual end up slide. Uh, what I'm going to do is put together a video on like, study tips and prep tips for the exam. Uh, please keep reviewing the content if you're going to sit the exam, but also just review it to learn it. Uh, we've covered everything that should be on the exam in here somewhere. Uh, Atlassian doesn't do gotcha questions. They will just ask you questions and if, you know, there might be some that are a bit more challenging or not, but they're not going to try to trick you. So that's a very good thing to keep in mind. Uh, excuse me. Um, so I'll post a video with some study tips and some ways to prep and get ready. Uh, if you want to take the exam and I'll encourage you to, we've done the work of sitting through Rob, talking about this for five hours. Uh, plus your own time. Um, I will put more, uh, flashcards up on the website, hopefully before Team. Um, honestly, my days are getting away from me here. Uh, but that link goes to, uh, the website I've set up at the bottom. There's flashcards to help us study. And coming up next, I'm doing the ACA 900, which is for Jira's software. So this is the, um, I think their most popular associate level one. But the one that like software developers, project managers, anyone who uses Jira for project planning will find beneficial. That will start up after Team. Um, so if y'all are going to Team, uh, come find me. I'll be hanging out at booth 76 or shoot me an email. Um, Scott, you're very welcome, my friend. Um, my email is robert@heen.tech. Um, so if you have further questions on the ACNA 920 or anything about Confluence or Jira, please reach out. A number of you have. Um, and that's a great way to get in touch. Another thing I've got is a Discord server they're called. Um, and this is live chat throughout the week. So this is in addition to these sessions, in addition to Atlassian community, which is a great resource. Uh, but we've got folks in here talking about Confluence and Jira and cats and a whole bunch of other stuff. Um, trying to keep it all organized. It's been fun. Uh, but please reach out. Uh, if you have questions, let, let us, the whole group know. And if you want to take the exam and are like nervous, you know, reach out for support, like you can do this. You've done all the work. It's just a question of like getting over the line now. Um, so thank you all so much for sitting through. Hopefully you got through all five sessions. I really appreciate you taking time to learn with me. I'm learning stuff. Uh, I owe the group a video on calendars and I have to go learn how those work. Um, and a video on how to sign up for the exam, just like walk folks through the steps. Uh, Emily, I hope you figure out that calendar integration. Let us know if you make it work. Uh, but don't go too crazy and make sure you get some sleep. Alright folks, thank you again. Uh, again, I'll be at Team next week. I'll have some live content popping up on the channel, so be on the lookout for that. Otherwise, it'll be the week of April 14th that I'm really back online. Um. So I really hope to see you all there. And if you can't make it to Team, they do live stream stuff officially. But let me know if there's specific topics you want me to go dig into and I'll see if I can make time to go chat up folks. Woo. So you are all very, very welcome and I need to go find my beautiful intro video, or I guess it's now my outro video. Alright, uh, I'll keep the chat open, so please get your questions in if you still have them. Um, I will respond to them in a blog post, hopefully before Team. Um, we'll see if I can get time in between now and then. Uh, otherwise be on the lookout a little bit later in the week for a response on your questions.